7:06, I'm gonna start the meeting now, so thanks for showing the slate of the agenda. Call to order at 7:06. Thank you for your patience, slight interruption in getting started today. So I appreciate your patience. So that's item one, item 1.1, the call to order. I'm gonna move right on quickly to item 1.2, which is roll call with council member one.
Thank you, Chairman Malone. Let's do our roll call. Councilmember Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Councilmember Lyford is.
Excused.
Councilmember Billy Malone.
Present.
Councilmember Nick Arndson.
Present.
Councilmember Dorothy Wong is here. Councilmember Hannah Petrie.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Dr. Thomas is.
Excused.
Councilmember Daryl Aranda.
Hello.
Hello. Councilmember Madeline Barber.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Alan Peck.
Present.
You, Councilmember Reginald Wilkins.
Present. Howdy folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvia Vega.
Present.
Thank you. And Councilmember Diane Markison.
Here.
Okay, I think that is 14 present, so we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 1.3, approval of the November the 16th agenda. Councilmember Jones.
Councilmembers, you received the agenda in advance.
Motion to accept.
Okay, are there any changes or corrections? So.
Second.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded.
Okay, what is in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved unanimous. I can't see any hands or, okay. All right, moving on. I will say the internet does seem slow this evening. I'm not sure if it's me. If that's the case, I'm gonna ask, if I do get shut out, ask Councilmember Jones to take over the meeting at that point until I can get back in. Okay, moving on. Item two, officers report. This is the chairman's report. I'm going to concede my time and the vice chair's conceding her time. As we've just had Veterans Day and we'd like to tribute to, we'd like to concede our time as a small tribute to our veterans and our local veterans. My father was in the military. I grew up on barracks in different countries, so I have a great appreciation for veterans, so this would be a little, a few days late, but much appreciated. Over to you, Councilmember Jones.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Since our nation's founding, freedom in America has been anything but free. From the world wars and Korea to Vietnam, from the Cold War to Iraq and Afghanistan, freedom is paid for in blood, in sweat and in tears. Its currency is sacrifice. Our parents and grandparents, sons and daughters, husbands and wives left their families and their lives behind to fight for this country. They've shown the commitment and the courage to serve in the world's greatest military. And they've sacrificed their lives to protect ours so that our children and grandchildren can live free and brave with peace and prosperity in this country that we call home. Today, we come together as brothers and sisters, united by freedom, bound by history, humbled by sacrifice, to say thank you. So thank you to all our vets and all our families of veterans. That's it, Billy. Back to you, Billy.
Councilmember Jones, you wanted to announce something regarding Union Station?
Oh yeah, I wanna thank everybody today. We had 25 pies from the town council to Union Station. And when I pulled up and pulled out the pie, so happy to get the pies. So thank everybody for showing up at my door. It was wonderful. And Dorothy took pictures. So thank you. We'll do it again at Christmas. Thank you.
Nice. Okay, I'm, thank you very much. I'm gonna move on to item 2.3, recording secretary. For the interim secretary, Councilmember Markison.
Yes, I sent the minutes out for the September and the October meeting. I did not receive any comments back. Did anybody, did I miss it or did they send me thing? Okay, I'd like to move then that we approve the, both the September 2021 and October 21 minutes as distributed. Daryl is, Daryl is seconding it.
Okay.
Okay, Billy, thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The internet does seem a little choppy, so if you have an abstention, could you please voice it? Otherwise, it'll go down as unanimous. Thank you. unanimous. Okay, moving on. Item 2.4, treasurer's report. Councilmember Markison.
Yes, the balance as of October 27th, 2021 in our account is $1,750.01. And the only check we had come through this month was $9.99 for our website. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have, I have a bunch, let me just say, I have a bunch of checks that Chris dropped off to me last night that I will be depositing into account from the election. So next month, we'll have that balance included.
Okay, cool. All right, moving on. Item 2.5, corresponding secretary. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm gonna just announce some upcoming events. So if anybody in our community wants to provide any events to post on our website, you can send it to me. Again, our community calendar is at altadenaTownCouncil.org and my email is there and you can certainly email me. So I just wanted to alert everybody that yesterday, the Devil's Gate Southeast Entrance Community Meeting happened. Their information will be posted at Devil's Gate Project. That's some restoration efforts there and there'll be a January meeting. Don't forget, the Altadena Farmers Market happens on Wednesdays and they will even be open before Thanksgiving. So check them out, Altadena Farmers Market. Tomorrow at 7 o'clock will be the Akona Meeting. So hopefully you guys can attend that. That will be addressing housing as well as meeting our new captain, Jabari. And let's see what else. There will be a second annual My Tribe Rise Rodney King Foundation Turkey and Gift Giveaway at Christ the Shepherd Church. Let's see. And then LA County will be doing a Thanksgiving food giveaway on November 24th. So the flyer is up there. So those are the things that I highlighted and we're gonna hear lots more from our great community reports. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to the next subject, which is item three, public safety reports. And we're gonna start with 3.1, California Highway Patrol and Officer Boyd. Welcome, Officer Boyd.
Sorry, let me get unmuted. Hello, good evening, everyone. To, to kind of start off, just wanna mention that we, as we are approaching the holiday season and as pedestrian traffic and then traffic increases, want to remind everyone to please, please, please be vigilant with, with their speed in our unincorporated areas. We've had 24 traffic collisions last month and a breakdown of those traffic collisions, two of those were hit and run. And three, Officer Keller can kind of help me, but six of those 24 involved pedestrians and three of those six pedestrians were bicycle, involved traffic collisions. And then the other three were actual pedestrians. One of the things that we've noticed with those six traffic collisions involving pedestrians, whether it's, you know, pedestrians on foot or a bicycle, is that two out of the three bicycle traffic collisions, actually the bicyclists were at fault. And out of those three pedestrian traffic collisions, one of the pedestrians was at fault and that was because they were not using the crosswalk. And the other pedestrian traffic collision had to do with one person exiting their vehicle, opening the door and an incident occurring as a result of that. And then the other one was actually the driver found to be at fault. So again, as we kind of enter, especially around school zones, this holiday season, traffic is increasing. If you guys can help us get the message to have our, you know, residents, parents, constituents, just kind of watch and watch their speed. And hopefully that'll help curtail some of these traffic collisions. I know Officer Keller and I had a chance to meet with the PTA for the Altadena Arts Magnet, had a good conversation with some of the parents there. And then we'll continue to do our enforcement around school zones and just in the unincorporated areas. And lastly, if, if you guys have any, any venues for us possibly to do presentations on some of these traffic issues, we do have grant money available for us to do presentations on, you know, pedestrian crosswalking safety presentations, bicycle safety presentations. Officer Keller and I will also be certified to do car seat installations. So there's a lot of opportunity for us to continue to promote safety with that traffic or otherwise. So please feel free to collaborate with us if you see fit.
Okay. Any questions from the council? And again, right now, a lot of screens are frozen, so if any council member has any questions, please feel free to speak up because I might not be able to see a movement of my hand.
Billy, it's Victoria.
Questions from the council.
I'm not sure if you can hear me or. Go ahead. Sorry. I just wanted to thank both Officers Boyd and Keller for being at the Altadena Arts Magnet PTA meeting last week. They were able to address parents directly, which was important. We have a I think we're trying to get the message across and their being there and being a presence there. And I think I may have seen Officer Boyd at the school once this last week where somebody was there. It could have been you or it could have been someone else parked on Calabasas at Almolino. And there was a very successful meeting, including Councilwoman Barber with Public Works as we work to continue to improve the pedestrian safety at both Altadena Arts Magnet and Elliott Arts Magnet. So thank you both for being there.
My pleasure, Victoria. Thank you for having us. First of all, that's the perfect kind of venue we want to be involved with, with the PTAs of as many schools as possible, just so we can get our message out and let teachers, parents, students know what we're looking for and the violations. If they have any questions on, can I cross here or there? Unfortunately, because we are the middlemen, we can't impose lower speed limits, speed bumps, signage. That's all through the Public Works. Dorothy, I did get your email. I just want to let you know. I looked through it. I was at home. I have quite a few kids, so I didn't get to read all of it. I did see that you're looking for a safe pedestrian crossing. I'm all on board with you and I will help out any way possible. But like I said, I think it's very important that we educate ourselves, our neighbors, our teachers and our our children's parents, safety first and to teach first and foremost, the kids, the safety. The best way to be safe, whether it be crossing the street or walking to school, it's very important to pay attention and just watch out for traffic yourself, not expect drivers of vehicles to be paying attention. So yeah, just be vigilant, pay attention, safety first, especially in school zones. And again, as many PTA meetings or schools to give any presentation, we have the grant money and we're available to do it all.
With regard to that, I have a quick question. Who would an organization contact to avail themselves of one of your presentations?
So you can contact, you can shoot myself or Officer Boyd an email. You can also call my office. I'll put the contact information in the notes section. Feel free to contact the office. You can leave a message for myself or Officer Boyd or our office PIO, Vince Ramirez, would all be happy to help you set up a presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Dorothy. Anybody else?
No, Councilmember Wong?
Oh, yeah, just quickly, I just wanted to also thank and also acknowledge the importance of partnerships, community partnerships and partnerships with the Highway Patrol. So last Saturday, we had Officer Ramirez come with us and I happened to have an extra collection of helmets because you guys were out of helmets. And we set up a really great bicycle safety skills course at Loma Alta Park, sort of a car-free zone. And so your partnership was really important. So thank you for participating and also empowering the young people in our community that day. Thank you.
My pleasure. I wish I could have attended. I had another prior engagement. Myself and Officer Boyd, we're gonna get training for bicycle rodeos here in the near future. So we'll be able to put those on ourselves and get some safety equipment out to the local areas.
Yeah, thank you. One last thing, the Speed Trailers on Lincoln, Lincoln, I think by La Vina right now.
Yes.
And I noted at least two cars going well over 50 miles an hour on Lincoln, just so you know.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I see Officer Keller. Officer Boyd. I really appreciate your time and I hope to see you next month.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on. Item 3.2, the Altadena Sheriff's Station. And we have Captain Williams.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right, good. I just want to start off with a few crime stats for the month of October compared to 2019 and 2020. So we have a slight increase in our violent crimes, like our aggravated assault crimes. It's not that big in number, but we did see a slight increase. The thing about those aggravated assault crimes, most of the people, the victims knew the suspects and there was some type of personal motive involved and it wasn't something that was just random occurring. But there was a slight increase. But the main thing I want to talk about are our property crimes. Compared to 2019, the property crimes significantly decreased. But when you compare 2021 to 2020, we do show a slight increase. And reading those reports is mainly vehicle thefts or vehicle burglaries, vehicle burglaries, or people taking parts off of cars, like catalytic converters. So I just want to remind people and I probably will say the same thing for the next few meetings and any community meetings that I attend, please remind people to lock their vehicles and also to take valuables out of their vehicles. A lot of these, when I read the reports, it's people leaving in plain sight their purses or cash or laptops. And with the holidays coming up, it just makes them for easier targets. So please take those valuables with you. Lock them away, put them where people can't see. If you run inside the grocery store, I know it only takes 10 minutes to run in and out, but it takes one minute for somebody to break into your car and steal that valuable that you had. So we think that and a little bit of increased patrol presence will hopefully make that property crime go down. The next thing I want to talk about are neighborhood watch groups. I had the opportunity to attend a neighborhood watch group this Saturday for Rubio Vista Road. And it was a nice event. So I encourage other neighborhoods to please have your neighborhood watch groups, block captains, things of that nature. Just getting together and talking about things that are going on in your neighborhoods. And if any advice or anything like that is needed, please don't hesitate to reach out to the station and we can help out in any way that we can. Also, the community advisory committee, it kind of slowed down a little bit probably because of the pandemic. And I'm hoping that we can rewrap that thing back up. It's a very important part, I believe, of maintaining that partnership between the sheriff's department and the community. It certainly helps. If those that, if there are people that are interested in helping with that or becoming involved in that community advisory committee, please reach out to me and I can direct you to the people to speak to. A couple of events, well, just one main event that will be coming up this Saturday. I will have a coffee with the captain event. That will be this Saturday, the 20th at around 10 a.m. It will be at a coffee shop, Pattycakes. It's on Allen and New York. So please attend if you can. And then right after that, I hope to attend that My Tribe Rise Food Giveaway at the church right off of Altadena. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Captain Williams from the council? And again, go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
Um, we haven't gotten our monthly report. Are we still going to get those reports for our census tracts?
Yes, I have, I actually have those reports. How would they send out normally?
They were emailed to us.
From the captain?
No, they used to come from Lieutenant.
Well, that would, I guess now it would be me. So I'll make sure someone sends that, sends that out.
Okay, thank you.
I dropped the ball on that one, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. That happens and sometimes it doesn't always come out. But usually we try to get it the week, the week prior so the council members can look over it so that if they have any questions, you know, they can pinpoint the questions they have rather than being surprised at the moment.
Absolutely. So I'll have that out to you as soon as possible. And then please reach out to me if you have any issues when you do get them. I'll be happy to address.
Then I have one more little thing. I've been reading that catalytic converters program where they put names on them or they somehow put identifying marks on them. Is that something we can get in Altadena?
I really hope to bring that to Altadena. There are some logistical issues to deal with. So what, what she's speaking about is the, where they have the, people can come to an area. The car's lifted up, the catalytic converter is serialized in some type of way. That way, if it's ever stolen or taken and it's found, we can attach that property to the rightful owner. So yes, we, I've seen other stations had it. At the last station I was, I worked at, we had it there, but it's just a matter of liability issues and who's gonna get underneath the car and etch it. Will it be personnel from the sheriff's department or will it be a professional that we hire? So we're looking to hopefully get that, that started. That's a main goal of mine, so. And also, there's things that they sell that you can attach or cover over the catalytic converter to prevent people from stealing. Hopefully I can get that started. I certainly will let you guys know as soon as we, we get that started.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Billy, it's Victoria. Captain Williams, I hope to see you on Saturday. I had planned to be out of town, but we had to cancel our trip, so I'll be able to come by and meet you in person. I did have a question I meant to email you about hosting another prescription drug takeback program. The last one was very successful and very well attended, but I think it was prior to the pandemic. Or there could have been one that included sort of like over the counter medications too during the outset of the pandemic, but it has been some time. And I had noticed that there were some other jurisdictions that were scheduling though, so I just wasn't sure if it was on your radar.
It was not. I'm glad you brought it up, but I'll certainly put it up, make a note of it. But that's something I would like to have done also. Yes. I think I saw another hand.
Did I see another hand?
Yeah, sorry. Just quickly, you might not be able to answer this question, but I, regarding neighborhood watch, I've been kind of looking around our community where folks have been concerned and there are neighborhood watch signs up, but they're all faded and so I don't know if that comes through the sheriffs. I don't think Public Works has those. I don't know if you can answer that or Deb. But where we can acquire new neighborhood watch signs?
I know of, I can look into that certainly. There's an area up by Pitcher Detention Center where we have a sign, where they make certain signs and things like that. And I can certainly see if we can get some of those signs made, Neighborhood Watch. What I probably will need to see is probably a sample of how you would want it done. And then I'll direct it to the signage group up at Pitcher Detention Center and see if they can recreate that. That's something I'll look into. I'll make a note of that also.
Thank you.
How many were we thinking about right offhand?
I don't know.
We can talk about it later.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? I see you'll hear no more responses. So thank you very much, Captain Williams. Thank you for showing up and we really appreciate everything you do. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Absolutely. And I'll have those reports to you ahead of time.
Sounds good. And I hope your introduction to our community is going well.
Oh yeah, everybody's been so nice and supportive, so I really appreciate it. I like to show, express my gratitude. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 3.3 with the LA County Fire, Maria Grayken.
Good evening, everybody. The report for the month of October. There were a total of 285 responses in Altadena. 247 of those were for medical calls and we did transport 180 patients to the hospital. We had three fires during the month. One was a trash fire, one was a vehicle fire. And then we did have one structure fire on Lake Avenue that was, it was accidental. But it kind of shows when, whenever you're cooking, whether you're cooking indoors or outdoors, never leave your cooking unattended. So they were barbecuing in the backyard and they did briefly leave the barbecue unattended and it did flare up. It caught the patio on fire and then that extended into the structure. So luckily, the firefighters were able to get there rather quickly. And they did keep. And they did keep the damage confined. So it was a property valued at over a million dollars and they were able to save. You can see a big chunk of that. So they did have a hundred thousand dollars worth of property damage. But it could have been much more. Um, we did have one gas leak with no damages, a power line down, and then we had sixteen traffic collisions that we responded to. And those are all outlined there for you. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? I see no questions. Okay. Thank you, Maria.
You are very welcome.
I appreciate you coming every month and giving your report. I know it's it's, 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 it's late in the evening and but we appreciate your time. Appreciate coming and we'll see you next month.
Yeah, the, the report starting next month might look a little bit different and I'm trying to see what kind of data here I can keep providing to you. I may have to sacrifice some things. But I'm, I'm just learning our, the, the new system that we've been using now for about a year. And I'm learning more and more about it and and its capabilities, but I have to do a little bit of give and take. The one positive that's going to come out of this is that I think what I am going to be able to provide you with is a map of Altadena that will plot where all the incidents are. So far, it's not going to plot whether it was a fire, a medical call or anything like that. It'll just kind of give clusters and you can see just for the entirety of Altadena where the responses are concentrated. I'm going to try to play with it a little bit more and see. You know, the, the vehicle accidents take me quite a bit of time to look each one of those up. And so I, I'm, so some of the give and take might be that I, if there is a way for me to isolate. If there's a way for me to isolate the car accidents onto a map, I may just provide you a map of where all the traffic collisions are occurring instead of putting them on the table. So I'm, I'm going to try to continue to provide the information that I know that you like, but it may come in a different format. So and we can, we can tweak it. We can tweak it based on your feedback, what, once I, once I get going with the new format.
Thank you. Any, any questions now? Okay. Well, thanks ever so much, Maria. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And have a good night. Okay, moving on, item three point four with cert. Deb Haveston. Hi, Deb.
Hi, neighbors. How are you? So in September and October, we did not have a meeting for cert either in person or online. There were all kinds of reasons. Mostly I think people got tired of it for a while. So we, we quit after all of the Zoom meetings that we had during the pan, during the heat of the pandemic. We picked it up again in November and we talked about future events and how the shape of what, what cert might look like. And what meetings we might have for the coming year, for the end of this year and the coming year. We had an especially interesting meeting on November fifth at the behest of Captain Williams and also representatives of various volunteer organizations. We're, we're talking, we talked about the best pathway to improve Altadena's response to say an earthquake or other large disaster. And representatives of various organizations were on the Zoom meeting, including representatives from the ATC, the Chamber of Commerce, Alert, our ham radio network, Akana Elliott came, the library, Altadena Map Your Neighborhood, Fire Safe Councils, and the American Red Cross. So we were comparing notes and trying to figure out how we might coordinate our efforts and how we might discuss our efforts and then communicate our efforts to each and each one. Not to mention, it was great to see everybody and put a face to the names that many of us know. We also talked about pursuing a resilient city strategy, which is a pilot program from the Lucy Jones Foundation and our Map Your Neighborhood president for Altadena, Ann Nolan, is, it has applied for this Lucy Jones Foundation grant. So that's what we've been doing. Thank you.
Any questions for Deb?
It's, it's Maria with the Fire Department. Deb, I just wanted to make you aware also, and we can talk offline or e or through email. But the Fire Department, we have a community risk reduction captain in our public affairs section now who is basically regionalizing cert and he's working with our sheriff partners and a lot of the other cities as well. But one of the things that our department is going to be doing is keeping a database of a voluntary database of people who have been trained in cert. So that after a, an earthquake or during a wildland fire or something, we can go into that database into certain areas and then try to pull cert members to assist us. With doing that, we see a lot of, well, we see a lot of assistance after earthquakes. But with, with respect to wildland fires, we see the potential for assistance from cert members to do rehab or to even assist at the command post. And that is something that we are building. There, there is already a built in cert module, but we're kind of refining it to do a little bit more. And I'm wondering if you think that your cert team members, if that's something that they would be interested in to receive that additional training and potentially be called upon to assist us during wildland fires at the command post and in rehab.
Yes, ma'am. And I can help, I can help put you in contact with Monrovia, Sierra Madre, La Cañada and Altadena. We've been coordinating our efforts too. So I'd be glad to do that.
Dates, but it's, I, I think at this point it's going to look like it's going to be in January.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any, anybody else? Any more questions? Okay, I'm going to move on to item four special presentations. And our first special presentation, item four point one, Foothill Municipal Water District with Michael Lee. Hi, Michael.
Hi, hi, everybody. First time in this meeting. Sorry Nina couldn't be here, but yeah, I'm taking her place. So I can be just ask good of a job.
And I'm going to share my screen now so Michael can give his presentation. You see my screen? Okay, go, Michael.
So, yeah, so Foothill Municipal Water District, we, we, we service Altadena, La Cañada and La Crescent. And our service area is about twenty two square miles. But we've been a little bit more proactive in the last couple of months because of the drought. And we want to just make sure that the community of Altadena knows, you know, what's going on with their water, the water that they're getting. And just like a future, future water supplies and conditions in California. So that's why I'm here and this, and that's what this presentation is for as well. So Dorothy, please, if you can go on to the next slide. So just to give you guys a little bit of information about Foothill, what we do, which I kind of a little bit, I gave you like a brief preview, but so Foothill, we were, we were incorporated in nineteen fifty two after World War Two, when there was an increase in population in the Foothill area and as well as the veterans that were coming back home from World War Two. And we have about eight, we have eight member agencies. And if you go to the next map, I can talk a little bit more about it. So if you look at this map, on the right hand side, Altadena, you guys have four for water providers. So you have Canal Irrigation District, maybe, you know, like one of these would sound familiar to you. We have Rubio Canyon, Rubio Canyon Land of Water Association, Los Flores Water Company and Lincoln Avenue Water Company. So those, those are the four member agencies of Foothill that provides water service, services to the Altadena community. And as you can see, our other four member agencies, Valley Water Company and Liberty Utilities is for La Cañada and La Crescenta, Valley Water District and La Cañada Irrigation District. They, they service La Crescenta, La Crescenta area. Next slide. And so on this slide, just, just to give you guys a little kind of like a brief overview of how southern, southern California, how we get our water. So about forty five percent of our water comes from local supplies. So this is from, you know, we, we don't have these out here, but it's in, in the foothills, but decent desalination, groundwater makes up, makes up about forty five percent. The state water project, we get about thirty percent of our water from there. And twenty five of the percent also comes from the Upper Colorado River Basin. And that goes through the Colorado River and, and then we transfer that water via the Colorado River Aqueduct. And that totals up to be a hundred percent of our water in Southern California. Next slide, please. And on this, on this map, you're kind of see kind of similar from the, from the previous picture, we have California on the left and Colorado on the right. And the percentage that you see up there, if you see peak snowpack, snowpack and as well as the runoff. So you, and this is like average flow. If, if it's, if it's anything, so one hundred percent is average. So on an average year, if, if you see the percentage is at one hundred, that means that we're getting an average amount of, of snowpack and average amount of a water runoff. But as you can see, this is kind of like a map that shows you like how bad conditions are because this is recent, maybe it's a month old, but you see it's, everything is below hundred. So that means that we're not getting our regular amount of snowpack and rainfall from both sides, from both of our sources that we get our water from. So next slide. And so this is Lake Orville. So this is one of the main reservoirs that we store water and this water actually goes, this is one of the reservoirs that through the California Aqueduct, we, we transport the water from up there all the way down. And as you can see, things are looking pretty bad. So this is from August first and then it's very at record slow and then we're, you know, in mid-November and things aren't, aren't getting any, any better. Next slide. And this is Lake Mead. If you guys have been, you know, to Arizona, Nevada, or you've been around this area. Lake Mead is also another large reservoir where we, we store water that comes to California. And if you look at the picture on the bottom right, you can see where that line is and, and where the water is and where it used to be. So as you can see from both reservoirs where we get our water or water supplies from, things aren't looking good either. And Lake Mead is also at its historical low. Next slide. Thank you. So there has been a lot of like regulatory actions that has taken place. So on July eighth, Governor Newsom issued an executive order to do a voluntary conservation fifty percent. And then on October nineteenth, Governor Newsom declared a drought emergency for all, all counties in California. So all fifty eight counties are in a drought emergency. November ninth, Metropolitan Water District, they're, they're the one that manages most of the water in, in Southern California and their board of directors declared a drought emergency and Foothill Municipal Water District. On November fifteenth, we adopted our stage three of the water shortage contingency plan. So a lot of the water agencies, if not all water agencies in Southern California are trying, kind of transitioning to a drought emergency and we're trying to relay this message to our communities. Next slide, please. And this, this graph shows our storage. Our storage for, if you look to your left, it's, it dates back to, to the year two thousand and you look all the way to the right. The two point five is, is the two point five million acre feet. So you think about, about one acre fee is about, it fills up about one football field. So you can see that to scale how much it is. So this is how much like water storage we have. And this number, as you see, if we don't get that much rain, we're going to tap into this reserve. I'm going to be, and, and we'll be using this water. So this, the number is going to go down. So you look at like, you know, our previous drought from two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen, you can see, you can see how each bar graph goes down as the drought went on. Next slide. And this is where it gets kind of like more personal for us community and, you know, as the LA County. So if you look at like the blue and the red area, those two areas only get state water project water. So when, when we looked at previously and, you know, like we get a water from California, Northern California and the Sierra, and then we also kept it from Colorado. So these two areas, they only get water from the state water project. And on December first, the state is going to declare a zero percent allocation. That means that these two areas will get zero water from, from the Sierra Nevada. So that's a really big deal. Because that's, you know, about forty five percent of our, of their source water. And if they're not, if they're getting zero percent allocation, that means that the state might, might make it mandatory if we get, if we don't get any rain in the next, in the winter. There, there are going to be like strict restrictions. They're, they're talking about zero water for irrigation and only water that you can use this for health and safety needs. But for Foothill, if you look at right straight into the middle, where it says Foothill Municipal Water District, we're just in that little pocket. And we're lucky enough to get both the Colorado and and, and the, and the state water project. So for the community of Altadena, Altadena, we get both. So we don't have to worry much, but supplies and, you know, precipitation is not good right now. And we're going to, we might see stricter restrictions in the future. Next slide. And if you look at on the right hand side, if you look at that little yellow bar, if we get a zero percent allocation, the area will only get about one hundred thousand acre feet of water. Next slide. And this is where I was talking about the health and safety. So if we go into our winter months and where we usually get most of our rain and just based on, you know, like current precipitation and just weather pattern and climate, it doesn't look like, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we're going to get any rainfall. And if we do, if we don't get any rainfall, we're going to see, we're going to see a lot of the restrictions such as, as you can see, it's going to exclude outdoor watering. And then the only thing you're going to get for, for the state water project area is for drinking water sanitation, fire suppression. There's been talk about not, not allocating water even for commercial industrial, which will have, you know, some economic impact to the area as well. So yeah, these are some things that we should be aware of. And, you know, it's not just, you know, water that comes out of our faucet. But without water, which drives a lot of, you know, the economic engine of Southern California, it could have a lot of economic impact. Next, please. And this is where Foothill, when we went into stage three of a water shortage, we're, we're in, we're in the alert of the extraordinary. So this means that depending on your retail agency, there, there might be some restrictions of your watering days. So check up your water agencies. And just ask them, you know, like which, what stage they're at and then what watering days they're mandating. Next slide. And here are some rebates that Metropolitan Water District offers. And yeah, please feel free to look at them. There are a lot of rebate opportunities. Foothill Municipal Water District, we're actually working on a program where we're going to offer free weather based irrigation controller. We had this program two years ago. And it was very successful and we're planning to do another installation of it. So it will come with a weather based irrigation controller for your landscape and as well as the insulation. So it's a cost free program and it helps, you know, if you're, if you have a current weather based irrigation control and you're looking to create, this is a program that you might be interested in. And, and you can go to the next slide. There are rebate programs. And then so this is a turf replacement program. If some of you guys are aware of it, if you're looking to get rid of your turf and you're, you, you want to be more water efficient, Metropolitan Water District offers two dollars per square foot. So if, let's say you have, Uh if you if you take out one thousand square foot of your turf, you get um you get two thousand dollars that you can use in the conversion process. Next slide. And these are just some commercial uh incentive rebates. Next slide, please. And this is um and this is just a turf replacement uh program for a commercial. Next. And um this is something maybe um Altadena uh as a town council you guys can look at. So with uh with the drought, Metropolitan actually increased their um turf replacement program from two dollars to three dollars. Uh per square foot. So that's about fifty percent increase in the rebate opportunity. And if there are libraries or if there are, you know, community centers that are looking to just, you know, save some money. Or if they're replying to remove their turf, this is a great program for you guys to also look at. Next, please. And this is a uh these are the two programs that Foothill um offers. So we have a residential residential water audit. So if you have an irrigation system or you have. Um like, let's say you indoors, outdoors, and you feel that you have a leak within your property. We ha- we offer this uh free re- uh free uh residential water audit where we send out a contractor and they will assess your property indoors and outdoors. And they'll let you know if there are inefficiencies or you have like a leaking toilet and stuff like that. Next. And uh these are the website that you know, it's not that you can also go to to look at rebate opportunities. Next. And uh this is a picture uh with this uh this is the end of the slide, but uh yeah, so we 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 have like an annual uh student art contest. And um Stephanie actually won uh the Metropolitan Student Art Contest. And uh her her artwork actually got put onto a uh student art calendar contest. So that's pretty cool. Um does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Michael from the council? Again, I'm the internet.
Yeah, I I do, Billy.
Okay, go ahead.
Um I just have two quick things. One is uh beware of and check into what your tax. Uh liability is for getting money from the state for the for your cap, for your um. Grass replacement having speaking from experience. Um so just check, it's a really good program, but just check into that. Cause I had to pay a whole bunch of taxes. Um the other thing is that we have at least two census tracts that have Pasadena water. Uh do you know offhand how much of the information that you shared applies to Pasadena water?
Yeah, so so Pasadena uh Pasadena um Water and Power, uh they're also a member of Metropolitan Water District. So like the uh the because, you know, because the um Altadena is an incorporated area, there are certain, you know, like uh service area lines. So like um I know a portion, some small portion of Altadena uh are is are serviced by uh Pasadena Water and Power.
Yeah, it's actually pretty big.
Yeah, and then the 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 rebates that I uh that I talked to you about, um all the rebates that um. That I spoke about does does uh you can also, if you're a Pasadena Water and Power customer, you can still apply them. The only one that you can is the one that's specifically to Foothill because that's our own program that we catered to our service area. But all the other rebates and the website that I provided, you can you can use that um um that link, the links that I provided and you can still apply to all those rebates.
Great, thanks so much.
Of course.
Okay, and I have a question.
Um okay, go go ahead. Uh councilman Beck.
Residential water audit. Uh who who do you contact to get what?
So that's uh that's one of our programs. So you you can uh if you go to Foothill's website, uh FMWD dot com.
FMWD?
Um D as in district. So it's a short for Foothill Municipal Water District FMWB. Dot com.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
And Dorothy has my email. So if you're interested, um she she can definitely pass along my contact information and I can uh uh and I can send you the information as well.
I I had did see that question in the chat, Michael. I don't know if you have a public email that you're willing to share. And if you could, could you put it in the chat for uh people to contact you?
It's in there now, Billy.
Yes, okay, okay, awesome. All right.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
All right, thank you. Any more questions from the council before we move on? Excellent. Thank you for a great presentation, Michael. That was very informative. I think we all need to know that information. So thank you.
Of course, and uh thank you for having me.
Um hopefully, maybe we'll come back and do an update soon after.
Yeah, I know. Yes, of course. Uh yeah, as as the drought goes on and uh like like I said before, like the last drought was two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen. So uh it's it's not going away. So uh we would definitely probably be back and and uh keep keep the community uh the uh the community updated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, um item four point two grocery outlet. Um with Jose and Sandra Ven- Ven- Venezuela?
Venezuela, that is. Um hello, uh thank you, Chairman Malone. Can you guys hear hear us?
Yes.
Yes, good, good, good. Well, uh very nice to see uh quite a few familiar faces. Uh but for those of you that we haven't had the pleasure to meet in person, uh we just really wanted to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves to the council. Uh my wife Sandra and I uh, you know, are now the official new owner operators here in Altadena. Uh a little bit about us, we have been with Grocery Outlet for a little bit over three years. Uh this is actually our second location, our first store that we opened back in October of twenty nineteen. Uh we were blessed enough to open on a hind in Orange County. Uh we were there for a little bit over a year and a half. And then, of course, the opportunity uh became available in Altadena. And um you know, um we we are here and we're happy to be here. Um just uh working a lot to try and get the hang of things in in the community. Um and um uh thank you very much uh for for the opportunity. We just wanted to introduce ourselves and and try to get a name and a face. Sandra.
Hello, everybody. And just to reiterate what Jose said, um thank you so much for the invitation. We are very happy to be here and I just wanted to inform everybody about our ribbon cutting for Friday, December the third. At ten AM and we hope that um you will be available to come and join us. Um. We have some fun stuff going on, so we look forward to that date and to uh meeting those of you that we haven't had the pleasure of meeting in person. Thank you once again.
Um that's that's it, just a little bit of us. And um again, just happy to be a part of the community. If there's anything that we can do to help, um you know, please uh reach out.
Thank you, and I highly.
Did the turkeys come in? Nope, still struggling with the turkeys, very limited.
No hams. Uh we got some pies finally, um but uh it's been a struggle. So um.
Definitely.
Um you know, sorry about that, guys. Just that's a struggle with um just getting product in, unfortunately.
We we all understand the supply issues, the supply chain issues right now. So I think everyone can be very sympathetic towards that. Um I I would highly recommend anyone that's able to um to to partake on December the third and make sure you're there for the ribbon cutting. Um it's it's always good to support our local um businesses coming in and to support anyone coming in to support our communities. So any council members can make it. I strongly recommend you do and join Sandra and Jose. So uh. What time does it start again?
Ten AM.
Ten AM, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna, I know you mentioned it, but I just wanted to make sure I made a note of it as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna give everyone a chance to give uh ask questions if they had any. So thank, thank you so much for coming and introducing yourself and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, moving on, item four point three, Christmas Tree Lane Association with the President Scott Wardler.
Hello, Billy. I'm on, but for some reason, the 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 picture has disappeared. Can you hear me?
Hello, I did see your picture earlier, so I did.
Oh, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
All right, well, good. I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what happened or if I may have done it, but I apologize. But I can see you and I'm glad you can hear me. The report is that we, thanks to the participation of the community. We um the wonderful participation of the community, actually. We uh uh were able to complete putting the lights up um almost two weeks ago, a week ago last Sunday. And uh um we had had restrict restricted uh volunteers because of the social distancing. Um we have not had participation from the high schools as we usually had um last year or this year. Um but people just showed up and we tried to put them to work and uh it worked very well and smoothly. And so we finished uh a week and a half ago. Um thanks to all of you. Um now, we need to have the lights inspected by the county to be able to start them. And so I don't have a start date for anyone. Um but we're hoping that that will get done uh sometime uh towards the beginning of December. Um uh another uh thing that happened for us was that, thanks to our own Billy Malone. We were, CTLA was able to secure a space within the community for our storage needs. Um Billy suggested that we talk to Pasadena Unified School District, um which we did. And the school district uh is allowing us to use uh property at Franklin Elementary School. On Ventura and near Lincoln um for our storage units, which we have just recently purchased. So we will be moving them there um quite soon. Uh and that was a big need of ours. We have expanded the scope of our project and we have more equipment. And more lines and um we desperately needed a place to put that. So Billy, you were a lifesaver for us. Thank you very much for your suggestion. Um.
You're welcome. But I'm glad, I'm so, I know we had a few conversations over that and I'm glad it actually worked out.
It it worked out very well, beyond our expectations. So thank you so much. Um the other news is that um for years, Christmas Tree Lane has been trying to become a five oh one C three. Uh organization with the IRS, which would be beneficial for us theoretically. In that people might be more willing to donate and be able to take the write-off on that donation. And it's fallen through for one reason or another, uh mostly because it's fairly complex and we were all amateurs. And uh it just didn't happen. However, the board approved um going to a professional. Um who is very reasonable. And then we're in the process now of uh of securing five oh one C three status. And we're confident that that will happen quite soon. Um and that's pretty much it. That's the big news for us. Um but I do want to thank the community for coming out. Every weekend, we had new people showing up. They had seen our signs asking for volunteers on the street corners. And um showed up and uh have stayed. We have a number of people that came once and continued to come back. And we're very grateful to the Altadena community for supporting us so well as they have for all these years. Thank you all.
Uh a- any questions um for Scott from the council? No? Um I wanna give you a huge big thank you for Scott for showing up and uh and giving us a report. Um as as we all know, Christmas to lean is a huge part of our uh culture here in Altadena. And um I I'm glad that you're here sharing the updates. And I know that we've we've missed out on the um the actual uh lighting event. Um things will change, but it's good to know that um CTLA is still here, is still part of our community and not going anywhere. Even though there's been some hiccups with COVID. So huge big thank you to you and your board and everything you guys do.
Thank, thank you very much, Billy. I have one thing to add that is that's important. Um we were mandated last year by the county to uh 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 to not have our event. Because of the virus. Um this year, that mandate didn't happen. However, after a lot of talk and consideration, we made the difficult decision not to have the event. Um we thought we would. We thought our centennial would be um uh the event would happen this year. Uh postponed from last year, but we were not able to do that. Um once again, because of Delta. Had that not occurred, uh we would have had the event this year and we are certainly hoping to be able to have it next year. But we, it was a hard vote, but we decided better safe than sorry. And uh we reluctantly voted to uh postpone the event until next year again. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Um thank you, Billy.
Any questions? Uh thank you again for your time. I really appreciate it. Um okay, moving on, item five. Uh Altadena Community Reports, starting with five point one, the Altadena Library with Nikki Windsor. Is Nikki here? Okay, hi Nikki.
Uh Nikki, I think you might. Hi, yeah, okay, here we go. I'm like, I'm in a hotel room. I'm sorry, I'm at a HR conference. All right, you guys can see my screen, okay? All right, awesome. Thank you. All right, good evening. Nice to see everyone. All right, so just wanted to highlight um any our upcoming holiday closures that were are happening on Thanksgiving as well as Black Friday. So uh both of our library ranches will be closed on Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. As I mentioned last month, uh we did expand to have evening hours on Tuesdays. So we're now open from twelve to eight on Tuesday nights. And then in addition to that, we're opening at ten AM on Fridays and Saturdays. I did have a conversation with my management team this week and we're looking at going back to like as close to normal hours, I would say. Starting in the new year. So I'll have more information about um even more expanded hours at the December meeting. So again, we're just continuing to look at um patron count, uh the volume of people coming in. It's definitely not like it used to be, but our statistics continue to grow. So hopefully, we'll see more and more community members visiting our libraries. Um oh, I just wanted to highlight, uh we have had a lot of turnover, like many uh organizations in the last few years. I am excited to announce that our new community partnership librarian, their name is Ashley Killian, who um relocated from New York Public Library. To be our community partnership librarian, started with us on Monday, which was yesterday. Seems like a long time ago already. Um they will be getting out into the community, really uh focusing on our read local, shop local and um connecting with all of our partner groups. So I'm sure many of you will be hearing from Ashley in the near future. Really excited to bring them on board. They have a very, very strong partnership background uh working with NYPL. So again, really excited to onboard them. I've been conducting interviews for both our Assistant Library Director and IT and Technical Services Manager. Uh the IT position, actually, the candidate accepted. Um we're anticipating them starting in December. Luckily, uh Christopher Kellermeyer has stayed on board and he's going to onboard the new person. Um uh fingers crossed, we'll have a new Assistant Director um either in December or early January. So more information to come. And what was previously known as our Administrative Services Manager, uh we've now uh created a new job description called Office Manager. With more of a focus on finance, uh risk management, as well as um payroll and timekeeping responsibilities. The board will vote on that new job description next week. So if you know anyone that would be interested in an office manager type of position and wants to come work in a really fun, awesome library system. Please spread the word and have them visit our employment site. So real quickly, I wanted to give you guys a building projects update. We did post a request or proposals for an architectural services firm um back in September. It closed in October. We did interviews with the top four firms. We actually had thirteen firms apply for the work, which was amazing and many, many high-quality firms. A lot of people want to come work on these libraries. It's amazing. We did interviews last Friday and made a selection. We'll be taking that selection to the board on Monday at their meeting for them to vote and authorize me to contract with that firm. So if you're interested, we'll be publishing the board package tomorrow. Our next joint Community Facilities District and Facilities Committee meetings, we're bringing both of those committees together. Will be taking place on December eighth, which is a Wednesday at three PM. At that point, we will be showing both of those committees, the bond issuance documents, which will include cost estimates around how much we will bond out to complete both projects. All of that information has to be published ahead of time. We actually showed the bond issuance documents to the C F D committee in the beginning of October. So if you want to take a look at those preliminary documents, they're on our district website on the Board of Trustees under Meeting Materials. Or reach out to me. I'm happy to share everything that we have. We want it to be a very open and transparent process for all of the property owners in Altadena. We're also going to be having our next community focused group meeting. So that's with all of our stakeholder representatives on December fourteenth at two PM. So with Town Council, we have Chris O'Malley that sits on that group, and I'm sure he'll report back to you about what is discussed. The main thing that we'll be doing at that meeting is introducing the focus group to the architectural firm that we selected and laying out next steps. In terms of the bond issuance timeline, we anticipate the board getting those documents to approve with the cost estimates in December and doing the bond issuance in January. So once that takes place, we'll be able to kick forward with having the bond proceeds on the building projects. I know that's a lot, lot, lot of information, but I just wanted to update everybody on what's going on. Just a reminder, our Board of Trustees meet on the fourth Mondays of the month at five PM. So that's this coming Monday, the twenty second. December, it is the third Monday. So that is a little contradictory, but that's due to the way the holidays fall. And again, you can always reach out to me if you have questions. So real quickly, our curiosity connection, our mobile library on wheels has been out at the farmer's market every week, pretty much. Isabel Briggs shared her project of shared landscapes with the town council two months ago. She's going to be having opportunity for teens to connect on November seventeenth as well as December fifteenth from four to seven at farmer's markets. So spread the word if you know any teens that teens that would like to get involved with that very cool project. And there's an opportunity for somebody to win a Polaroid camera. A couple databases I wanted to share that we were able to bring on due to state funding, which is amazing. If you have any school age children or anyone that you know that have kids that could use some one on one tutoring, we have Brainfuse. It's free. It's available seven days a week and tutoring ranges from kindergarten through high school calculus. It's live and it's with people that can tutor on all of the variety of subjects, including including tutoring for Spanish speakers. So spread the word. Again, all you need is your library card and it's free and really, really good quality tutoring. We also have a database called Skillshare with more than thirty five thousand video courses. And like I mentioned here, anything from graphic design to building inclusive work environments and many, many more. And we're also featuring Callosphere, which is a place where you can explore the history and culture of California through transcribed oral histories and other artifacts. So second Saturday is back. We've had two this year so far, both very well attended outside. Basically, like if you didn't bring your own chair, you probably were going to have to sit on the ground, which is amazing. We'll be kicking those back off in February of twenty twenty two and featuring a different band all the way up until June. So check out more information on our programs page. We're really excited to have an art installation right now from the Elliott Arts Magnet Academy. They're both in the reading court as well as over by like our new bookshelves. I'd highly encourage you to come take a look. They're really great art pieces. And there's going to be a reception with the students and their parents on Saturday, December eleventh from one to two at the main library. Working with Seed Library, we're also at their next meeting on December fourth, which is virtual. They're going to be featuring Making Firecider right in time for these colder times. And then on Wednesday, December the eighth, there will be a program at the Altadena Farmers Market with the Seed Library about making seed bombs, which are the California poppies. I'll skip over this one because I always talk about the book clubs crafting programs and gardening. Just a reminder, we have lots of really great children's programming going on. Of late, we've been doing a series called Fall Frollic, where we've been having outdoor art projects. So children and families are using elements from outside to create crafts. This coming Saturday, they're going to be creating pine cone owls. So spread the word. And this Friday, we'll be having a toddler free play. And again, lots of opportunities for teens to get involved. Just have them visit our programs page, especially those that like Dungeons and Dragons. It's a really well attended program on Saturdays at twelve. And to conclude, in honor of Veterans Day, I thought we'd have a quote from President Kennedy that as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. So thank you not only to our veterans, but also to all of you public servants that give your time and volunteer for our community to make it a better place. Happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Any questions from the council?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thanks. Are you doing anything over at Bob Lucas by any chance?
Oh, I didn't even feature Bob. Sorry about that. I believe there's going to be another upcoming gardening program. Beyond that, I'd have to take a look at the events page, but Diana is regularly offering not only literacy. So I think that's what I highlighted last month was her literacy program, but also doing planting and outdoor gardening programs in the garden beds as well as out front. Right now, we're preparing for winter and planting new things.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Any more questions? No question. Thanks so much again, Nikki. We always appreciate you coming and doing your presentation. We always enjoy hearing from you.
I always have way too much to say. So if anyone has more questions, please don't hesitate to reach out.
It's better to have too much than too little, so.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, moving on. Item five point two, the Altadena Chamber of Commerce with Doug Colifair.
Thanks, Billy. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things briefly. As Jose and Sandra alluded, the on December third, we will officially welcome the new owners of Grocery Outlet to our community with a ribbon cutting and some other activities. So please, please mark your calendar and try and join us for that. It should be a fun event. And then secondly, we have a brand new holiday event shaping up very, very nicely. It's going to be, we've called it Sip and Shop. It's going to be also, we've coined Mariposa Junction, which as you might expect is Mariposa and Lake Avenue. We've got, we'll have some live music, we'll have food trucks, local vendors. In addition to the brick and mortar stores that are in that area, raffles, beer and wine should is really shaping up to be a fun event. So Saturday, December fourth from twelve to four. Try and stop by, bring the kids. It should be a fun, fun, fun event. And there probably there should be additional details up on our website as well. And we'll have marketing, you know, they increased pretty good now at this point in time as we get closer. And then lastly, it's not too early to flag your calendar. Our annual installation and awards dinner will be Friday, February fourth, two thousand twenty two at the Altadena Town and Country Club. That is all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions for Doug? All right. Thanks so much, Doug.
Thank you, everybody.
Quick question. Got a quick question.
Go ahead.
How could, what if someone wants to participate in the sip and shop, who would they contact?
Contact the office, Alan.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you can reach out to Veronica at the office. Either emails probably best, offices at altadenachamber.org.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay, unlike other guests, I'm going to ask you to actually stay, Doug. For the rest of the meeting. Item five point three. The Los Angeles Parks and Recreation and over to Sam. Thank you, Sam, for you.
How's it going, everybody? All right, thanks, Billy. So we had have had a pretty busy last couple of months. I know Dorothy mentioned some of the things already with My Tribe Rise and some of the other events we've been doing with Parks and Rec and with the Altadena community. So 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 far, we have our winter session that within our department that's going to start on December sixth. And so with Loma Alta and Farnsworth Park, we'll be having our Recreation for All program continue. That's a Tuesday through Thursday program from five thirty to seven. And on Fridays, it's from five thirty to six thirty. Saturdays, it'll be from two PM to four PM. And again, that'll be at Farnsworth in Loma Alta. Loma Alta on those days will be offering a basketball program while Farnsworth will be offering a ballroom dancing class. And that is a free program and that is an ongoing program that we've started that way back in September. We also have our Everybody Plays After School program, which is free. And that started on September seventh and it's ongoing and it's Monday through Friday from two thirty to five thirty. And it's for youth ages seven to seventeen years of age. Also at Farnsworth and at Loma Alta, we're offering a free snack program for a youth ages infant all the way up to eighteen years of age. And it's Monday through Friday from three PM to four PM at Loma Alta and Farnsworth Park. With our winter session starting back up, we are excited to announce that we will be offering our Tiny Top Program at Loma Alta Park. This is exciting news since it's been down since before, since basically since the pandemic. We were doing it virtually during the COVID last year. However, it since has stopped. But we're excited to be bringing it back on December sixth. And it will be offered at Loma Alta for youth ages three to five years of age. Registration is open now. We are having a limit, though, on the amount of enrollment that we are allowed to have. So it'll be a maximum minimum of eight kids. And depending on the participant's residency, if you do qualify for our C D B G grant, it is a free program for you. If they do not qualify, they will have to pay the fee. But like I said, registration is open. They can register and you can come into the park and and register to if you call if you're wanting to see if you qualify for the C D B G program. We have our Thanksgiving community events upcoming. So we have the Loma Alta one, which is tomorrow. And it's going to be from three PM to six PM. And they'll be offering a free dinner for anybody that wants to come up and get a meal. And it will be in our upper community area. It's going to actually be outside, but we will be having outdoor heaters. So I know it gets a little chilly, but we will be having it outdoors just in respect to the COVID guidelines and all of that. So it'll be a free full meal for everybody to come up and and enjoy it with the Altadena residents and with the staff. So looking forward to that tomorrow evening. Again, it's at Loma Alta from three PM to six PM. And then we're also offering a free meal. It's actually a lunch that will be on Saturday, November twentieth at Farnsworth Park. And it's from eleven AM to one PM. It is limited. However, it's first come, first served. But it's a free meal that the supervisor is putting together of the park, Alejandro, and he's excited to be offering this to the community on this coming Saturday from eleven AM to one PM. And that will be outside in the kind of near the baseball field in the picnic area, upper area for anybody wanting to know where it will be. It will be outside. So just look at over down by the new batting cage area down that way. We're also excited to start up. We're ending our our fall session of contract classes. And we'll be starting up our winter classes and on also on December, the week of December sixth. We have a lot of in person classes and we still have some virtual classes that we're offering that will be both at Loma Alta and at Farnsworth Park. So classes are available to sign up online. So if you go to parks.lacounty.gov forward slash reserve, you can sign up and look at for any classes that you may be interested. There's hundreds and hundreds of classes that might pique your interest to sign up for. And as Dorothy mentioned earlier, we did host a community event with My Tribe Rise and First to Third to we had held it on Saturday, November sixth. There was a smush ball tournament along with music and vendors. And Dorothy had her bike safety course and that which was a great hit. And we had a great turnout for the smush ball tournament and we had a wonderful turnout with everybody coming to check out local vendors. So I really want to thank Dorothy for that and everybody that's a part. And also I appreciate all the community that came out to clear the extended sidewalk. I know a lot of residents had been asking about that. So we were really appreciative for that and that all those that went in and did that because that was greatly needed. So thank you, Dorothy, for getting that organized and and put together. Also, I wanted to mention that we are having our Basketball League registration for youth ages of five, I'm sorry, four to seventeen. It is available now to register. The league is going to be held at Loma Alta Park. However, we are informing anybody that is registering that we will have COVID guidelines and rules. So that is ever changing, but the details are coming in to us as as we get closer and closer to the season. And if they call the park, they'll be able to get the full details and information. So it's changed week to week on how they're going to implement the the guidelines for the participants in terms. I know people have been asking if are they going to be required to be vaccinated? Are they going to be required to wear masks? Like I said, that is ever changing. So the league does start in January. So we'll have more information as as the weeks go by and know things as we know change from week to week and day to day in terms of that. And then lastly, I know I wanted to mention this because it's going to happen before the next town council meeting is that Loma Alta will be hosting the Winter Snow Day event, and that's going to be on Saturday, December eleventh. And it will be from four PM to eight PM. And we will be having snow, food. We'll be having giveaways and prizes and we'll be having a lot of activities for young children as well as families. And a bunch of snow will be having over forty tons of snow that will be laid out on the grass field. We'll be having music, hot cocoa and cookies and all of that. And it will be a lot of fun. Those that have were there in twenty nineteen that were part of it and the years before that will know how exciting it is. So we're just elated that we're able to have this event again since we did miss it last year, but it's going to be an exciting event. The staff have been pretty excited to plan this large event for the community. And we'll also be giving away toys on that day as well. So that will be a our toy giveaway as well on that date. We are still accepting toys if people want to make donations. We just asked that they are wrapped. I'm sorry, like still packaged if you're going to be donating these toys. So yeah, it's going to be December eleventh from four PM to eight PM. So we're excited to have that event going on. And the the farmer's market also said that they would be part of it. So vendors that want to be part of it as well, we're always accepting that within members of the Altadena community. So and then lastly, I just did want to mention that my role within my department has changed. I was recently promoted to Assistant Regional Recreation Director. I'm no longer the manager of the Altadena area. So now I officially oversee Altadena Lockwood Center and Somar District as a Rec Director Assistant. So I don't have a replacement for my old position, unfortunately. So but I will still be attending the meetings. So my job title has changed, but I'm still going to be part of the meetings until further notice. So but I'm glad to still continue to work with you guys and that even though I was promoted, I'm still representing this this area. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, Sam. I I think that sentiment is everybody here. So congratulations on the promotion. I see Nikki has a virtual hand up. I don't think she has a question or is there, is it just a congratulation?
That's a virtual clap there.
Okay, virtual. Okay, all right.
If we want to donate toys, how do we get them to you?
So you can go to Loma Alta Park and you can just speak with the park supervisor that you guys. So you can go to Loma Alta Park, and you can just speak with the park supervisor that you guys would like to donate toys. You can call up. There's gonna always be somebody there Monday through Saturday uh from ten thirty A M. To nine P M.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I actually have a couple of questions, I know that me and Sam have we've spoken um or been in contact over questions and concerns um from local residents, and one of them, I just wanted to first updates unless I missed it on reserving um the Davy Building and the completion, and and do we have any uh information about when people can start booking that in advance? Um, I know in particular, I put over somebody who's interest who's been dying and holding off on a wedding because they want to.
Yeah, so I know a lot of people have been asking in about our indoor rentals, so we're anticipating that to um open up probably, if not by December, by by January, so. We have been slowly getting a lot of um I of our restrictions um loosened, so hopefully by the I would say the earliest would be December, and the latest would be January, where they would start allowing the indoor rentals and in the in the parks.
Sounds great, thank thank you, Sam, I appreciate it. Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Council member Beck.
You had mentioned uh some courses that were going to be available at at parks dot L A county dot gov, and what was the rest of that?
And then it was a forward slash reserve.
Reserve?
Reserve.
Okay.
Can you put it in the chat, Sam?
Sure, yeah, I'll put it in the chat.
Super, thanks a lot.
I have one question.
Yes.
Sam, congratulations, um, well deserved. Uh, so the the meal tomorrow? Uh, is it sold out, or?
No, so we actually are able, we we ordered enough food from the vendor to feed over about three hundred people.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Where's it gonna be tomorrow?
It's gonna it's gonna be, and you know where the the playground area is, it's gonna be on opposite of the park in the patio area.
Okay, got.
Yeah.
Okay, so people just show up?
Yeah, people can start showing up at three o'clock, and we'll have tables and chairs outside and heat lamps out there, and the the vendor, uh, he he will be serving the food, it's kind of like a a service where he can, he'll just serve the food as people show up.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions before we move on? Okay, thank you, Sam, and again, congratulations. Huge we thank you for all the time you put in up to now, and and also to in your future promotion, so thanks, thanks again. And hopefully, we'll see you next month.
Yes, thank you, Billy, and I'll put that in the chat about the uh word of reserve.
Thank you. And then moving on, item six, community reports. Uh, committee reports, and we're gonna start with item six point one with the election committee. Chris O'Malley, Councilmember O'Malley.
All right, I'm gonna hope this works. There we go. Uh, good evening, council members, good evening, Altadena neighbors, good evening, YouTube later. First off, I want to thank the town council for giving me the opportunity to run this election. It was a great experience, it was a lot of fun, a lot of work, uh, but it was great to see people in our community come out, do their part for democracy. Um, I want to give a special shout out to the committee here, Hannah Petrie, my my incredible co-chair, couldn't have done it without you, Nick Aronson uh for committing time and energy and hard work uh more than I could ever ask him to. I could not have done it without you either. Uh, Barry Strick for the publicity, and Eric Pierce for his running AltadenaElection.org, which is not officially affiliated with the town council, but it provide a clearinghouse for a lot of information, and I really appreciate it. I want to give a special thanks to Nikki Winslow and Jonathan Avrilo, I really hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, at the Altadena Library. Uh, both the main library and the Bob Lucas Branch were kind enough to host us, provide us with furniture and pop-ups. Uh, and I'd like to thank Bachi Labad at Paddock Cakes, who was our east side polling station. I want to thank the uh great people at Neighbors Building a Better Altadena and Legal Women Voters for, as always, hosting candidate our candidate forum, it's always production, and uh it's great to get those voices out in the neighborhood. I want to thank the Altadena Sheriff's Department for coming and picking up those ballots after after both the second and the sixth election. Uh, I want to thank Deb Halberstadt for attempting a last minute get together of uh at-home ballots. Uh, she was wonderful, even though it was uh unorganized, and that was entirely my fault. I want to thank all the volunteers who who spent time working the polls, not have done it without you, and of course all of the candidates who decided to throw their hat in the ring. Make the Altadena great. Here are election results, uh, from forty six oh one, Victoria Knapp, forty one, forty six oh three oh two, sorry, uh, I did that wrong, sorry, Dorothy, what's your census track? Forty six oh one? I screwed up, uh, there are the winners, their census tracks may or may not be correct. I did send out an email to you earlier with the correct ones, I think I copy pasted those wrong. That's why I tell my students to prove it. Uh, I'd like to just take this moment to move that the town council accept the results of the election. Certify.
Okay, can we go to a full screen so we can see everybody's hand?
Good thing, hold on.
I said.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor of, so we have a second, sorry.
Yes.
So you have a motion, a second on the table? Um, now we're gonna go to vote, so all those in favor to certify the election as read by Councilmember O'Malley, say aye.
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 Uh, all those all those opposed, say nay. I see no hands, so any abstentions? Um, I hear no abstentions or any nays, so uh passed unanimously, Councilmember O'Malley.
Just really quick before I hand the floor back over to you, Nikki, uh, sorry, Billy, I'm losing my mind. Uh, we will. There is a vacancy in forty six oh two, I just want to throw out that we will have a special election to fill that seat. Details will be determined shortly and publicized on. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on, I I I just want to make one quick announcement. As far as we're moving forward, because next now that the election certified, the new members will be sworn in at next month's meeting in the December meeting. Um, at that point also, too, uh, the new uh uh executive committee will be announced. And currently, we did, everybody did receive notice asking if anyone was in had an interest to sit on the um slate committee chair, the slate committee. Um, and if anyone also had an interest in being the chair of slate committee, so I just want to make one announcement this evening. For the chair of the slate committee, um, that will produce a slate uh for December is Doug Cauliflower. So Councilmember Cauliflower will be the chair of the, and um Doug has also been given the information of who is who also uh responded to the email and showed an interest of sitting on the committee, so. The rest of the committee will be uh will be assembled very shortly, but the current chair of that uh slate committee is uh Councilmember Cauliflower. Okay, moving on. Item six point two, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Marcusson.
Yes, the Land Use Committee met two weeks ago um and voted on an item that Victoria Knapp will be per um presenting.
Good evening, council members and community members, um, I do see Robert Panosian here, who's representing the residents um at nine seventy-three Wapello. Um, this is, um, let me read the it's application number R P P L two zero two one zero zero eight three six three, and it's a residential property, again, located at nine seventy-three Wapella Street in Altadena. The owners have requested a uh modification to the side area setback, um, reducing that requirement from five feet to three point six inches as per the drawings provided by the architect for the project. Most um of those on the um Land Use Committee are also here, but for those um that were not at Land Use, Land Use did recommend that we move this project forward um for approval without conditions. So I did want to give Robert an opportunity to put up the um the renderings so that everyone can see, and I do have a couple of new um emails that came in that I want to read into the record from a couple of the um neighbors in that area. So I will do that first, and then, Robert, I'll turn it over to you. Um, so I wanted to read from um Amit Nagra, who's located at nine six five Wapello Street. Hi, Amy, this was directed to Amy Lyford, um, who's not here tonight. Sorry for the delay in getting back with response to the flyer, seeking our input. We are okay with the project next door at nine seventy-three Wapello Street in Altadena. Feel free to give me a call or an email, thanks and warm regards. Amit. And the other is from Maria Traficante. Hello, Amy, I'm writing in regard to the flyer that was left in my mailbox regarding my neighbors Jay and Lucy, Lucy's proposed addition. I live just next door to Jay and Lucy at nine eighty-one Wapello. I'm writing to offer my full support of their project to expand their home to accommodate their growing family. Jay and Lucy are wonderful neighbors, and I have full confidence that their request to modify the existing setback requirements is necessary and will be managed with attention to the neighborhood aesthetics. I imagine their addition will increase the visual appeal of their home and hence make our lovely street in Altadena even more appealing. Kind regards, Mara. I said her name is Maria, but it's Mara. So those were the two additional letters we got since the Land Use Committee meeting in support of the project, and there was nothing um in opposition to the project. So, Robert, do you want to quickly uh share your screen so we can just make sure everyone sees what we're talking about here with this particular property setback on the side?
Good evening, council, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
You can hear you.
Great, let me just minimize. So um, so yeah, uh, thank you very much, Victoria, for that introduction. Um, I'm just gonna walk through the project quickly, um, if there are any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, so essentially, this is the property in the middle of the screen, uh, nine seventy-three Wapello. Um, we are essentially adding uh five hundred, five hundred and forty-four square feet uh towards the street. Um, and so essentially, uh, the front of the house will be moving uh fourteen feet forward, um, rendering a thirty-foot setback from the from the from the street uh, street-facing property line. And so, um, and so essentially, uh, we are asking for a modification, uh, on the left is the existing uh site plan, on the right is a proposed. We are we're essentially requesting um a reduction of the side yard setback from five feet to approximately three and a half feet to essentially um extend the uh existing um axis or 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 plane of the uh of the west-facing facade of the house. And so, um, we think uh we think it's it's, you know, it it works more so towards a uh in in a correctional manner, because the house is moving forward and kind of uh joining the rest of the properties um uh on that side of the street, and we we think um we think it's a reasonable um request, and um, and we're hoping the committee uh agrees. This is the elevation from the front. So um, we're essentially keeping this uh this uh hip roof in the rear and and adding uh forward um towards the street. And so if we didn't have the side yard setback, there would be a jot in the in the front facade, which would um, which we think would look bizarre and um and not very nice from the from the street. So, yeah, that's pretty much it, um, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can you stop sharing, Robert, so that we can go to gallery view? Thank you. Does anyone have any questions before I move to motion? Alan?
Just a quick question, is this thing changed from a single-family dwelling to a multi-family dwelling, like a duplex or something?
No.
Okay, I was looking at all the doors and and stairs going up the second floor, I didn't know.
Oh, right, it's it it goes down to the basement below.
Okay, thanks.
Dorothy?
Yeah, just a question I have on the uh side yard setback measurement, I think you said it's three and a half feet? Is that the is that the most, as the property goes back, is that the the same?
Ri- right. It's it's basically continuing, um, based on the survey, we're just continuing that dimension forward.
Yeah, it doesn't get any narrower?
No.
Okay. Thank you, and then just to confirm, Victoria, if uh nine six five, both those were the neighbors, the ones you nine six five and nine?
Nine eight one, nine six five and nine eight one, yes, on either side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, let me get my motion here. Okay. In the matter of C U P application, R P P L two zero two one zero zero eight three six three, residential property located at nine seven three Wapello Street in Altadena. The homeowners have requested a setback modification, reducing the required setback from five feet to three and a half feet as, three and a half feet as per the drawings. I move that the land use, that the Altadena Town Council recommend approval of the application for this modification to regional planning without conditions. Can I get a second?
Second.
Was that Sylvia? Thank you, Sylvia. Any questions before we go to a vote? I see no questions, so all in favor of the motion, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any um in opposition? Or any abstentions? Okay.
Before you
Go ahead.
Were there any public, were there any public comments?
Only the ones that I read.
Okay, okay.
That were new.
I see someone from the public in the audience, is that, are they the Taylors?
Hi, yes, this is us.
Yes, that's them. Good to see you.
Likewise.
Um, okay, can I ask what the final vote was on the uh?
It was fourteen to, it was thirteen to not, to, it was thirteen in favor.
Okay, okay, so it's unanimous. Typically, I would hold the vote because I'm the one that can't vote, and this is a tie vote. Um, but you actually held it, um, so I just want to make sure that.
I'm so sorry, Billy, I was moving along, sorry.
It's okay, we got the vote, and if it was unanimous, it doesn't really matter who held it, but if it was, you know, just for the record, I want to make sure that the it's, yeah.
Definitely not uh taking any liberties, don't don't read anything into that.
No, it wa- it wasn't, but you know, for the record, if it was a very close thing, and there was a tie vote, then then it would become an issue, we may have to take the vote again, so.
Understood.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you, and thanks ever so much. Great job, guys. Um, I just wanna uh does the Land Use Chair have anything to say before we move on?
No, um, should I?
Okay, no, I do.
Am I missing something? No, we.
Not, no, but I did want to make a a short announcement, um, we, the council did make a a vote on uh asking that the county listen to uh our, to the community regarding um new developments, sticking to the C S Ds and keeping our height limits to maximum three stories, and especially on commercial corridors, and not to go above that. Um, I did, we did get a response, I did send a letter out from the chair reflecting of our vote, and we did receive um a response, and I always want to make sure everybody received that. It did say from the county that um that they heard us loud and clear, and as much as there is a state ordinance and a housing crisis, that their very, the county is uh going to continue our conversation with the state as far as being sensitive to our community needs as well as other needs beyond that. And um, and then um, they did announce that in in that conversation That currently they at least have dropped the, uh, from five stories to four stories. So. It's, 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 it's helpful. And so I just want to thank everybody for being conscientious and, uh, being part of that. So, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item six point three, Communication Committee, Nick Anson.
Hi, everybody. So for anybody new listening, the Communication Committee is relatively new. Put in place to, um, enhance and improve communications with the community, um. And to that end, we've been looking to increase our profile and awareness of the council. Um, especially with this past election through outreach, engagement and trying new opportunities. So we had a lot of movement, but very little detail. So this will just take me a minute. We did, uh, hook up with the Election Committee to. Try to see if we could find some interesting ways to get the word out, but I will say. Uh, if I have it here, they, they were kind enough to let us put a question out to everybody who voted. Um, so we could see where they're getting their information and for what it's worth, um. It's kind of tried and true methods that I think you've all heard before. The two top ones were. Basically, the candidates campaigning. That is far and away the top way. People hear about the election and then, um, friends came in pretty close. Those were the two highest, just, uh, word of mouth. The flyers were definitely a, a, a strong third. So thank you again, Barry Strick for that awesome flyer and. Thank you, everybody, for getting those flyers out there. We split the Communication Committee into two groups, an internal and external. The internal, um. Had been focused on new member packs, but since we don't have anybody brand new coming in, um, a- at this point. Um, we're switching back up. We're still holding on to some ideas for that, but we like to only do one thing at once. So we're focusing on a retreat. So we can talk about how we interact, um, internally as a, as a council. So I'm hoping everybody will take, it'll be voluntary, but I'm hoping we get. Buy-in from all of you to join us in January or February as we put together a, a nice, like, two or three-hour retreat where we can really, um. Talk away from our meetings. External committee is. Shifting from the election, we're gonna shift back to the. We're putting together a council of organizations in the community so they can start to discuss with each, with each other, how to, um, be stronger and collaborate. Um, we have decided to kind of put that out to the community. So we're identifying. Some of the, um, more major organizations and they're going to form, uh, foundational committee. And that'll be aside from the council. So the council, uh, our committee is letting go of that a bit and turning it over to that group as we. As we see them form. And we're going to turn our ideas into, um. Kind of community education opportunities. Again, I don't have a lot of, uh, details of what that means, but we've got a lot of ideas. So hopefully next month I can get more specific on what we'll be doing with that. And lastly, um, I just want to make clear to the community because there was some, um, miscommunication on my part. There is an internship program, but it's specifically my internship program as, as a council member. This is not an Altadena Town Council internship. But to that end, we've had a incredible amount. Um, Councilmember O'Malley calls it my little army of interns and. They are working away all over the community and we're always looking for opportunities to get our students, uh, their volunteer hours. So. We are looking to create a comprehensive list of volunteer opportunities throughout the community and our. Um, Correspondence Secretary Dorothy might be finding a spot on our website to list that. So. If anybody out there has volunteer opportunities for these awesome students, let me know. I'll be sure it goes on that list. That's it. Thank you.
Um, any questions? All right. Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Anson. This is, uh, really good information. So I really appreciate the effort and the time you're putting into this. So thank you. Um, I'm gonna move on as there's no questions to, uh, item six point four. Say Streets Committee with Councilmember One.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm just gonna, uh, give some quick little updates and I'm just gonna make it visual so. You guys can just follow along real quick. So I'm gonna share my screen. Stand by. Okay, so I think you guys can see the screen, right? So this is a, a really exciting, um. Project. It touches Altadena, but it's actually called the San Gabriel Valley Greenway Network. Uh, so this will be a San Gabriel Valley-wide, uh, multi-use pathway network. Um, and it does include Altadena as one of the starting points. Uh, so there is a survey. I'm gonna link this to the website if I. Haven't done it already, uh, where you can actually talk about the vision of this connective network. And then there are these community virtual workshops going on. Uh, so that, uh, the next one is actually tomorrow, November the seventeenth at three thirty, and there'll be one more. On Thursday, November the eighteenth. Um, so it's a really great opportunity for Altadena as well to kind of think about. How we move around and how we connect and how this, um, trail system can, uh, be beneficial to our community. So that's that. And let me see if I can squeeze my way to the next one. Then a quick update on the Slow Street Program. Again, the Slow Street Pro, uh, the program promotes traffic calming. Helps the community comply with social distancing, encouraging physical activity. Um, so again, a lot of work, I guess, arguably now in some form of transition. So I'll read a little. Statement or update from, from the county. Uh, but just as a reminder, you can go to LA County Vision Zero or, uh, the link here. And you'll be able to subscribe to updates to know what's going on. Uh, you can also email if you want to sign removed, if you want to sign fixed. You can actually email visionzero@pw.lacounty.gov. And then you can call the direct line to the program manager, uh, at this phone number and, uh, Matt Dubio will answer the phone. So definitely, uh, the program has been an evolution in our community. Um, and it is an opportunity for us to really think about our streets, how we move around. And again, as, um. Uh, officers, uh, Boyd and Keller and LA County showed that this last month of October. One in four of our traffic collisions involved a pedestrian or a bicyclist. That's twenty-five percent. Uh, that's a very high number and exponentially, um, our, you know, our, uh. Pedestrian collision rate is higher than our neighboring unincorporated areas. So. I think we should all be thinking proactively as we are about traffic safety. And then, let's see. So I, I do have a public comment that I'll read, uh, but ultimately, um. The program is, we are still replacing and installing slow street signs and the development of a potential permanent program is underway. So again, the state, um, approved slow streets as a form of infrastructure. So that's why, um, it's taken a little while. And then regarding Vision Zero. Uh, the county's goal remains to enhance traffic safety on the county's top twenty corridors. Which can be found on page twenty-three of the action plan, which includes Altadena. Vision Zero, uh, traffic safety enhancements are also being added to ongoing roadway projects throughout the county as opportunities become available. Um, so that's it for now. I just wanted to give those updates. Do I segue onto my next, uh? Guess I'll stop sharing. Any questions? Anybody?
Is the Greenway Network part of that program?
No, this is a, a, uh, I don't know if it's a lifetime thing, like. Today, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they are also looking to make sidewalk, uh, sidewalk riding, um. Uh, by bicycle legal in unincorporated areas. That motion, um, went through the Board of Supervisors Office. Or meeting today. But this is a program to create, um, networks of. Active pathways that you can do, you can, they're visioning. So if you want to have a nature garden park along the parkway. Or how it actually can support, you know, safety in our community, um, this would be a really great time. So this is a, a county. Project. Maybe it's also, I don't know if Metro's involved in it as well, but it's, it's basically taking the tributaries of. The watersheds and those channels and then creating these connective networks. So. It'll take some time, but it's definitely something I haven't seen before and it would be a great potential for our community.
Sounds like a good thing.
Any questions? I think that's it, Billy.
Yep, I think that's it. No questions. Thank you, uh, for everything, Dorothy. I really appreciate all your hard work and everything you put into it. I will move on. To item seven, which is general public comments. And Matt's gonna go over to. Councilmember One.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, so I'm reading into record, um, from Hugh Bonner. Uh, and he says, while I understand the thinking behind the Slow Street Program. And while there can be problems with speeders on local neighborhood streets, I wish to note the following. Many of the signs that have been knocked down repeatedly, leaving some with only posts remaining, others have been repaired. Apparently by local residents using whatever materials are available. Resulting in a cockeyed or taped-together sign that is often knocked down again, resulting in further damage. Many signs are still placed in ways that are create, that create additional stress and danger for drivers. Due to various combinations of narrow intersections, parked cars, for instance, and at the intersection of Mendocino and Mythloian Drive. Multiple signs are placed along single corridors that seem repetitive or redundant. Uh, for example, multiple signs along Porter Drive between Mendocino Street and Altadena Drive. Yes, yet this redundancy still hasn't achieved the desired effect as some commuters are still speeding down this corridor. Some signs are placed on streets or intersections where local geography al- already makes speeding virtually impossible, such as the intersection at. Porter Drive and Brayburn Road. It remains a concern that local residents were not notified, informed, advised, or asked. For comments before the program was implemented. It is my hope that in future programs like this. Uh, that it will go through a process of public discussion in which comments from the community are invited and encouraged. That's it? That's the only public comments received?
That's it. Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna move on to item eight. Census Track Reports. I'm gonna start with forty-six oh one.
Thank you. Um, I am reading this on behalf of Amy Lyford, who is not present tonight. But wanted to read this into the record. On the Altadena, California Facebook page, there's been a thread related to the new owners of a property. On Camp Huntington Road just north of Rubio Canyon Dam. The original post by Carol Momsen read as follows on eleven, nine, twenty-one. Quote, "Not only have the new owners of a property on Camp Huntington Road blocked passage along the access trail into Lower Rubio Canyon." Which has been in use since nineteen nineteen, but now this, "Altadena history swept away this weekend in the blink of an eye," unquote. The post included an image of the former Henry Huntington Cabin, which was in disrepair, posted next to the image of the cabin's dis. The cabin's disappearance with only the stone chimney remaining. There are, as of eleven thirteen, twenty-one, seventy-six comments on this thread with a majority of the comments lamenting and upset about the loss of. Trail access. Majority of comments focus on right-of-way, but also the destruction of Altadena heritage and Altadena history without a word. There are two issues here. One, trail access. As a council member for, for Census Track forty-six oh one, who has seen trail access blocked in the past. The house at the top of Zane Gray Terrace blocked access to the Altadena Crest Trail in the two thousands. By building a fence to block entry via the street. I am very concerned, as are my constituents, about the way that private property owners are blocking access to public lands. I want to propose that this matter of access to public trails be taken up by the Land Use Committee of the Altadena Town Council. As a matter of public interest. That access has been in use at Rubio Canyon since nineteen nineteen. Carl Atticott indicated in a post on the thread that the right-of-way is, quote. Currently being discussed by LA County and the Trail Conservancy for the area, unquote. I would like the council to take up this matter with force to restore the right-of-way as so many of our community members are asking. Second, destruction of Altadena history by tearing down the cabin. While the cabin was in disrepair, as is on the property, I would like to ask the Land Use Committee to take up the issue of how. Historical properties and sites must be documented and preserved if at all possible. Action items. How can the council work to communicate to the county our ongoing concerns about right-of-way access to public. Trails and land with respect to the problem of individual private citizens blocking access to those public lands? And how can the council take ownership of and make recommendations to the county and local organizations regarding historical sites within Altadena? That should be documented in consultation with the historical society and the county. And made visible to members of our community for whom the history of Altadena is perhaps not well-known. That is the end of her report.
Any, any questions? Although I'm not sure there could be questions that could be answered because it was a very poor from somebody else, not from Councilmember now.
My, I have a question. What could we do about that? You know, I, I, I'm feeling sympathetic towards the person who wrote this and I'm wondering what could we as a council do? Anybody?
No. Um, we can do what we do. Um, we need to, any, anytime something comes up, it, you know, we represent the community as a whole. So we, we, we offer, we ask for feedback, um, from every angle of the, of any topic. Um, from as many people as possible. And then with that information, then we take that to county. With the, with concerns and the concerns has been addressed with, within that, um, outreach. And then, um. County will have to look at it from, especially when I'm assuming, I'm assuming here. When it comes to public access and stuff, county's gonna have to look at it from possibly illegal position. Um, because they are the, the governors of the, uh, public lands in county. And then take the next, next steps forward. So it would, it would kind of a. Two-fold thing is to get, uh, you know, one. As much information as you can on it. Um, because sometimes when you hear, you hear from, uh, one, one group or one entity. Um, it's, you know, there's maybe other aspects of it that are maybe even more important or maybe. Not as effective to other members of the community. So I think it's important to make sure that the outreach is done. On any topic we discuss.
Okay.
I would, I would also just mention that, um, and. Maybe Victoria, you can talk to her about, I mean, she's mentioning that the county's already working on it, that there's other. Um, areas that are working on it, which is not to say let them just go do it, but that it would be helpful to us as a town council. To be able to contact those people and see what they're, you know, what they may already be doing. Um, the other thing is that the, um. The access over private land to get to the, uh, Owen Brown Gravesite. Was adjudicated over a really long period of time, quite a complex lawsuit. Um, and so it's, it's not an easy fix, not that we won't look into it. And like I said, Victoria, if you can. Have her share with us what she knows, that the details, because just saying it's a problem. You know, we'll have to start from scratch and maybe we don't have to. So that would be helpful.
A, a lot of times, um, when something arises, um, if you just ask around. Most likely, it's already been worked on. And most likely, there was already something in process. So it's best to find that out first.
Right.
So I agree with Councilmember Marcus.
Right. So that'll just be helpful and then we can go from there.
Okay, thanks. I know I've used some of those right-of-ways to go and go to some of those trails. And actually, I was initially surprised that right-of-ways would be right in between two people's houses. You know, and, and then you go on off into the mountains.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, some of them belong to the Forest Service, some of them belong to the water companies. Some of them. Some of them, you know, like I said, the one to Owen Brown's Gravesite was adjudicated over a long time. Um, and so there's no easy, you know, one answer fix, fits all, so we just have to look at it differently and you know, private land is private land and that's another whole thing, right, so. Um, anyway, so we'll, we'll, we'll look into it, let's just get some more information, so we, like I said, we're not starting from scratch.
Council Member One?
And, and you, based on what everyone just said here, and I'm sorry if I missed it in the letter, Victoria was, you know, there is a group that started, uh, I believe from, you know, the Evolution of La Vina, which is the Altadena Crest Trail Working Group.
Right.
I know they're, they're working on it and there are minutes, um, at each meeting and the public is invited, so, um, and it has a lot of our sort of elder trail, you know, experts, so.
Right.
A, a great resource, um. And they meet the second Tuesday uh, of each month at seven PM.
Or maybe you can post that meeting info on our website as well, so that folks can, you know, look into that. The other thing is that, I know it sounds sort of hokey, but I always ask the Supervisors Office personnel what they know and don't know and who they've got working on it or not, not working on it, which is always a good place to touch base with, just to see what they know and don't know. That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, next Census Track Report, forty-six oh three, point oh one.
Uh, yeah, so just, uh, short and sweet, uh, this is really a recognition of how important community collaboration and community building is. So I just wanted to report in our Census Tract, uh, forty-six oh three oh one. Um, it's been exciting to see people gathering together, so, um, on, what day was it, Saturday, the last two Saturdays, so this past Saturday, uh, are, one of our neighbors, uh, in my Census Track, Jeff Wagner. Uh, he started up a community group called Altadena Civilian Conservation Corps, inspired by Edgar McGregor cleaning Eaton Canyon. Um, and so fifteen people, um, met at, uh, Loma Alta Park and, uh, cleaned, I think there were over ten garbage bags full. And, um, just seeing the smile on everyone's face, picking up whatever's found out there, um, and then just working together for solutions, so um, I want to give a shout out to Jeff, uh, for him organizing that. And if you want to learn more, um, it's Altadena Civilian Conservation Corps. Um, so that's been really uplifting and then the week prior, um, Sam kind of talked about the project, um, at Loma Alta Park. So effectively between these two weekends, uh, the cleanup of, uh, the parks and the walkway, uh, just drove amazing energy, so I urge fellow council members, you know, to have these, um, opportunities to engage the community and empower them, so I want to just give a shout out to Activate, uh, Peace in the Park, Loma Alta, uh, collaboration with LA County Parks and Core Partnerships, uh, they have with My Tribe Rise, First to Third, uh, and other great organizations coming together, Side Street Project, uh, the Altadena Bicycle Club, um, did the Bicycle Skills Park, uh, Highway Patrol came and helped out and, um, it was just music and good vibes and, um, Pasadena Autobuy came to do a, a bird walk and found forty difference, that was what I loved, forty different species of birds on one walk, just walking between the two parks. Uh, so I think that's my hope and, and fun to see how our community coming together can really solve things. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Council Member One? Alright, moving on to the last item, item nine adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and Nick, Nick cleaned up our office.
Oh, awesome, thank you Nick.
Yeah, I've never seen it, it's so clean.
Wow. That's awesome, thank you.
Alright, happy Thanksgiving, stay safe.
Thanksgiving, folks.
Good night, everyone.
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Pasadena media, thank you.
Yes, thank you.